Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I'd like to call Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, Committee of the Whole to Order. We did do the Pledge of Allegiance at the last meeting. I think we can, unless you want to do it again.
You're the chairman.
It's your call. You're the chairman.
Do it again.
Let's do it again. Never too many.
Did anyone forgot it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Arturiano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I will accept the motion for approval of July 11th, 2023, committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, got it. First, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, no presentations. Okay, next we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
All right. 2022-384, 2023-086, 2023-173, 2023-201, 2023-202, 2023-203, 2023-322.
Okay, do we have any one who would like to remove any of those ordinances for committee consideration? Okay, having, let's go with now for ordinances under committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, will you read CWLP, please?
I will, Mr. Chair. While our system updates from the prior meeting, it'll be just a little bit till the CWLP ordinances will be on the screen, but we can go ahead and start. CWLP, 2023-324, an ordinance approving payment in the amount of $40,000 to Sangamon County Soil and Water Conservation District for the Lake Springfield Maintenance and Restoration Program in the Lake Springfield Watershed for the fiscal year 2023 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2023-325, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of an Icadeo Visco Prompt Agitator Impeller for the Dahlman Unit 4 Filter Feed Tank from Icato Corporation in the amount not to exceed $55,580 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2023-326, an ordinance approving an agreement with Toshiba America Energy Systems Corporation for inspection and maintenance of the Dahlman Power Plant, Unit Number 4, turbine valve cartridges in an amount not to exceed $308,900 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? Alderman Redpath.
Director, could you tell me, is this something we need to be doing since we're getting ready to do some maintenance on the plant itself, or is this something completely separate?
Yeah, this is all part of the fall outage. So there's, after so many hours of operation on the valves, I think it's roughly about three years. It's about three, every three years we have to do this work.
There's not intertwined with what we just passed?
No, that's, it's a completely separate. The ID fans are a different piece of equipment, and this is actually on the turbine itself, the main turbine.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2023-327, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in the amount of $375,000 for natural gas parking charges for the interstate combustion turbine with Panhell Eastern Pipeline Company, LP, for a total amount not to exceed $625,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Public Works, 2023-328, an ordinance vacating the alley in the block bounded by Phillips Avenue, 11th Street, Enos Avenue, and NSRR to Youth Fair Chance Incorporated.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
General City Business, 2023-329, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class 8 liquor licenses by one for Frankie's Brew House Incorporated, doing business as Brew House, located at 617 East Washington Street.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2023-330, an ordinance to increase the number of Class 8 liquor licenses by one for 617 East Washington Incorporated, doing business as Brew House, located at 617 East Washington Street.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2023-331, an ordinance approving the appointment of John Michael Lesko as the purchasing agent for the city of Springfield.
Move for debate.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for debate. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Did Mr. Lesko like to come up and just introduce himself?
He's going to ask.
I asked if he would like to.
Got the blue shirt on, huh?
Yeah, I'm trying. Make it most comfortable. My name's Mike Lesko. I'm a lifelong resident of Springfield. It's an honor to be considered for the role of city purchasing agent. I started with the city of Springfield in August of 1996. So in the soon-to-be 27 years, I've tried to strive for to be honest, humble, and hardworking. It's those traits I hope to bring to the office of purchasing agent as we, you know, continue bettering city services for our residents and our taxpayers. So I really thank you for any consideration.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2023-332, an ordinance approving the appointment of Nikki L. Baker as Director of the Office of Human Resources.
Move for debate.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for debate.
I think she's here.
Yeah, she's here. Any discussion before she comes up? Ms. Baker, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Right here, Larry.
Hello, I'm Nikki Baker, and I'm very honored to have been asked to lead the Human Resource Department. I have over 35 years primarily in social service and corporate America with human resources and the management of human resources, and it's exciting to think about bringing those tools to my own community. I also was just born down the street. I never lived most of my life here, so it's exciting to be able to be of service.
Well, thank you for coming and welcome aboard, and we got a question from Alderwoman Conley.
Not a question so much as just a comment. Look forward to having you here. I will tell you, I think hiring and moving people through that process has been, is a really critical component. We've got, we know we've got so many departments that need staffing numbers increased, so I do hope you're ready to start very much running. And I do, and I expect we have kind of a transition planned already.
We do.
Wonderful. Looking forward to working with you.
We do, and I am.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, we got a motion. Sean, Alderman Gregory.
It's all good. I just wanted to say, young lady, that I'm, you know, we were up here looking at your resume, and both Alderman Redpath and myself were impressed by it, and one of the things that stood out to me were the certified in diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workplace.
Yes.
As well as introduction to systemic racism. So I know somebody with those type of studies is somebody that we should have as we look to increase our minority participation throughout our city, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
2023-333, an ordinance submitting Chapter 38, Section 38.15 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to public works, contracts, and project labor agreements.
Move for consent.
Second.
Debate.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for debate. Any discussion?
Who was the motion for debate, Mr. Chair?
Alderman Williams.
And who was the second?
Sean.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman Gregory.
I would just like to say first, I'm sort of confused on what it would be. I know we were sent multiple agendas, and the numbers was at 450 and is at 50,000, so I just need to know what the, you know, actual number is, and then I could go, is this correct? You know, this time, is this number correct?
So the correct number is $50,000.
Okay, thank you, because I know it was a few different emails with some different numbers on the public-facing information, so I didn't find that in our paperwork, but I just wanted to make sure for accuracy. You know, looking at this, you know, some of the things, and I know some of our union member, union leaders are in the crowd, so I think it's always appropriate to ask those who have much expertise in this area. And some of my questions are, I noticed that, let me scroll back here. As I said, I'm always interested in minority representation, and I do see where, there's a clause in there under number five where further public policy objectives as improved employment opportunities for minorities, females, and economic disadvantage in the conjunction in industry for purposes of this subsection, public policy. So we have goals of 25%. I think that is a great goal for us to have on our public works projects. I know a year or two ago Nate gave us some numbers, and we were running about 20%, so this definitely would be an increase. And I do know that from my own personal experience that a union has the capability to reach these numbers. I'm also interested, you know, this number six permit contractors and subcontractors to retain a certain percentage of the current workforce. I think that's very, very important to be in this, because I think that's some of the problem is not only within unions but outside of unions, is that a lot of times people who look like me don't get the opportunity. And with this type of language in there, and having to retain some of that workforce, it will help us grow in this city. And my only question is, what percentage would that be? And have we thought about what percentage that we would make companies have? I think that's a good goal to have. Other than that, I'll wait for my questions from our team members, so thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Thank you. So I just had some concerns that I need some understanding. So currently, and it's always been $50,000, Corporate Council?
That's correct, and Exhibit A, which is the operative language of the ordinance, has always had the $50,000 requirement.
Do you know where the 450 amount came from?
So that wasn't a part of the ordinance or Exhibit A. The best understanding that I have is that was just a typo.
A typo, okay. So I guess what I'm trying to do is figure out from the sponsor or someone why this is needed, why we're doing it, because if the public works director would come up, I have some questions you may be able to answer. From my research, 98% of public work projects are already done by unions. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. Yes, sir.
So, and then the mayor can approve up to 50% in her own right on anything, not just, you know, public works. So what I'm getting at, I'm trying to, I don't want to create a monopoly. I think we shouldn't cut out little guys, and we should leave some kind of room. And if you're already doing 98% of the work, what is the purpose of changing this? What, I mean, how does the city benefit? I'm looking at things like, are they going to have enough workers, the unions? We have legacy coming up, all that activity, the firehouses, which got, the groundbreaking was in May, but we haven't started. So I think the little projects, the smaller projects would suffer, because of course the unions should go after the multimillion-dollar projects, the bigger projects. I just think in Springfield, there's enough work for everyone. And when we start passing this kind of thing and don't have a justification or a good reason why, it can delay smaller projects in Springfield, and possibly, I'm still looking into it, drive up our costs just based on the delays and the waits that may be, start happening more because it's already slow, but because of manpower maybe, or how long it's going to take to do the smaller projects, because such busy times coming, and looking ahead at the days coming with Pillsbury. What's going to, as it goes down, and what's going to go in this place? This is a lot of activity just to say, oh, but that low amount, you know, we got to do union. Second thing I have, I don't know if you're, public works enforced this, but we always talk about PLAs, but we don't talk about what's in the PLA. So in the PLA is this language that Alderman Gregory is concerned about that deals with minorities, which you guys know, I'm all over that, and women, people of color, those type of things, not all, all unions. You know, I've explained myself many times that I support unions. I actually support this, but I support it as is, not with going down to any 50,000 or putting any kind of language like that on the books, because I'm trying to understand why we're messing with it. We need to leave it as is. It's been working just fine, and I haven't heard the outcry. But when we do this, I just think it's going to start disrupting and delaying a lot of things, and it's going to drive up the city's cost. I don't care what anybody says. So I would ask you to, if we're already at 98%, is it you that is wanting to make this change? Is it your department?
Well, it's concerning the contracts that come through the Public Works Department. Diversity is a goal that I know that you share with me and with Public Works to bring as many people and provide as much opportunity as we possibly can. And in my view, this helps us achieve those diversity goals.
Well, I'll just not hold up everybody's time. So this is going on to debate. So this is, so everybody who are listening here will have an opportunity to come into this place and tell us what they think about this, because I don't want anybody to ever feel that they are cut out. I just think it's enough work for everybody, and right now, everybody's working. I still haven't heard a good reason why we're doing this. So I appreciate you, Director, for answering what you can, answer Corporate Council. I got to figure out where this 450 language comes. You're saying right now officially it was a typo, and that currently we've never had anything but the 50,000 that you're proposing?
That's correct. I think the 450 might have been on the descriptive term of the agenda, but if you look at the actual ordinance itself and Exhibit A, which is the operative language in what was drafted, that has always been $50,000.
So we start off saying we're amending, we're amending, but what are we amending if it's already $50,000? What's changing?
Well, okay, so Section 38.15 of the city code as currently drafted authorizes the city to require PLAs upon making a written determination that it serves the public interest. What this ordinance does is it strikes that language authorizing a PLA and instead requires a PLA for contracts in excess of $50,000, which is the, that number was taken because that's the threshold of the purchasing power for the mayor. So any purchases that would go before City Council for approval will now be subject to the PLA, and that's where that number came from.
Okay. I appreciate your explanation, and I appreciate your guys' time. I'll speak with you further, Director, on some other questions that I had. I'll just say to the council in general, this is one of those ordinances that I feel just isn't needed, because we don't even have a good answer to why we're amending it, or why we're changing it. They already have 98% of the work, of public work, so why would they need this ordinance? And if anybody knows the answer to that, I mean, I'm willing to listen, because I think we can just continue as is. So thank you guys anyway for your time. I appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, when this ordinance first came up, I asked similar questions. You know, I always look at why we need ordinances. Is it necessary? Are we being repetitive? And what I liked about this ordinance is that in fact, it puts in the code that a project labor agreement sets forth the immediate and mutual binding procedures for resolving jurisdictional disputes. It guarantees against strikes, lockouts, other similar actions, standardizes the terms and conditions, ensures a reliable source of skilled or experienced labor, so the quality, but it also has the, addresses the issues that Alderman Gregory brought up, which are of utmost importance, and it codifies it, makes it clear. What I think the result of it is going to be is the quality of work is insured for any major project that's over $50,000. It's going to standardize the procedures. We all know what we'll expect. I appreciate the fact that it is consistent with the city code as far as the mayor's spending ability. I think that means the councils involved, we have a say on projects that are major, and I think the quality is only going to be insured because of this. That's the way I read the ordinance, so I don't really have a question, just more of a statement, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Redpath.
You know, I've never seen a project that had a PLA on it go sour. This is something that was put in place to assure the community that we're getting the best project that we can have. It stops outages, it brings skilled labor to the table, and that's what we really need. We need to make sure that we're giving the best we can to everybody, and that's why I'm supporting this.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I would like to point out, we've had, I think in Alderman Williams, you make a point where we've had some delays in the past, and part of that was around this council's desire to ensure that there were project labor agreements. By codifying this desire and this sort of standardization of what our expectations are for projects that are paid for through public funds, developers who come in already know what the playing field is. It's not, do you have a PLA, do you not? Everyone does. It doesn't mandate what kind of labor you hire, but it certainly mandates certain standardized work conditions. And the one component that is new, that is consistent, and I think absolutely Director falls in line with your point, is that this language requires that developers who want to come and work in the city using city funds will be hiring minorities. That does include women, and this is an important step for us, this is a way for us to put our priorities around how we see construction activity, how we see development activity in our city, and I think it is very important. It's, we don't want developers to come in and be like, so what are the rules today? Right? This is the rule. This is what we expect. We have had, we have had, we've had development activity come in. It's been back and forth. Do you have a PLA? Do you not? What have you done so far? This way, people know upfront. This is what this council wants. These are the expectations. They've been laid out very clearly, dot pointed, and I think it will make it much easier and possibly even smoother and faster for us to get these agreements to go through and to get this development activity started. So I'm very excited to see this moving forward. Alderman Redpath, I know you and the mayor are co-sponsors. I hope you don't mind if I added to this as a sponsor. Oh, okay, we've got a whole list. I would like to be added. I apologize. I'm busy with family and did not make that call, so if I could please be added as a sponsor to this ordinance. I think it is important for developers as they come into the city to know what we expect. This absolutely does it, and I think that is reason enough to pass this.
Okay, Alderman Williams.
Yeah, I just quickly say, so it's not that I'm against this ordinance. I mean, I have issues with the amounts, which I've spoken on, and I have issues with it not addressing who is going to monitor or enforce when we say, if we talk about residential, if we talk about women, people of color, any of those type of things. We don't just need to have it in there, and then nobody looks to see what's actually happening out there. We need, in this ordinance, something that says, and here's who's responsible, whether we get quarterly reports, or monthly reports, or whatever, on that activity and what's happening, to ensure that in fact, the right amount of people from Springfield are on the project, the right amount of minorities, the right amount of women, whatever we put in there as the goals, and what we want since we're doing what the council wants, we need to have that in there. We don't need to just say, oh, it's a construction project. Oh, it's a PLA, did they get a PLA? We need to follow up what's in that PLA and what it means to people. To them, we're doing our job. Thank you.
All right. Alderwoman Nutriano.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to know currently, do we have folks who look and see, like, who check the payroll of our contractors and things like that to make sure that we are meeting these guidelines?
I defer to my colleagues.
Sure.
We do, we utilize a program called ePrism that tracks manpower, labor, locations, that sort of thing. Every contract is a prevailing wage contract. They're required by state law to submit their certified payroll to the State of Illinois Department of Labor. So, and we do monitor those.
Awesome. So do you monitor for residency and minority and?
Well, it's part of the report that we would get for various.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Various of the jobs. They're put in as a contract, and then we can look and see what.
So there is a mechanism for us. Got it.
Yep. And we will try to expand it, or we're looking to expand.
Yeah, definitely.
When this goes in.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. And my question was, so for me, I'm a little uncomfortable with the, unless it's been determined, the exception, right? Like, I'm not seeing what is it going to, how are we going to determine if a project isn't going to have a PLA? Like, are we going to have a form, or is there going to be a process? Like, so I guess I'm concerned that someone would say, for whatever reason, oh, we don't want a PLA on this project for XYZ reason that doesn't serve the city's best interest? That's some other reason? So like, what is our mechanism going to be if we want to exclude the PLA?
So I think I'll take that one. Because these exceed $50,000, the approval would come through City Council. So the way, the way the approval of such a purchase, the ordinance would include that type of language, and it would be a determination by the City Council. And so we could, we can add that. That's the way it's drafted, and so we could add, unless it has been determined by the City Council, but it would be left up to this body to determine, based on the recommendation of a director, somebody seeking the purchase, whether or not they actually want to exclude a PLA. If it's some type of specialized work or special circumstance, this body would need to be convinced that a PLA was not in the best interest or appropriate.
So is it asking too much to get some sort of idea of, like, to formalize it more so that it would indeed, because we're not electrical engineers, you know, we're not experts in every field, to give us some way that we know the right decision is being made by the expert?
And are you talking by objective metrics to be placed in the ordinance? I'm concerned by doing that, then you're creating such narrow exceptions that when the actual specialized situation comes up, it won't be addressed by the ordinance, because we want them to be the exception, not the.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I think, right, we can talk later.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one other question that I had, oh, no. I'm sorry. I will talk to you later. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Clerk Lesko.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The comments on the agenda came from the bottom of the fact sheet. In the agenda paperwork, $450,000 was only listed in the comments section in the fact sheet. It was not listed anywhere else in the agenda paperwork. It was a typo. It's corrected, updated, and the fact sheets are online.
All right, thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Just a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Lesko, for that information. And I will just say, you know, based off some of the information, there is two other provisions in here. There's a statement that such union has a bona fide apprenticeship and training program approved and registered by the United States Department of Labor. There's also provision in here evidence of established membership recruitment programs. So this was very, very, very well thought out. You know, there's some things in here that I'm sure people know, you know, how we push, and I can say that, you know, these things, if on our city, on our city projects and public works projects, we have the capability with these things to increase it, and I am happy to see those things, and that it was carefully thought on how we increase and hold true to minority numbers. And I think that was very, very carefully thought out. As I read through this, there's several, several different things, evidence of numbers and things like that that we can get, number-wise. To answer your question, it is in there. So, you know, I just want to read and. So, you know, I just want to read and, and, you know, make sure we got all the facts and go from there. So I appreciate you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so this would be my final statement. You know, PLAs, to me, should be used for complex, big, complex projects that require some type of expertise. When we take it down to 50,000, I just think we start getting into areas of, of simple, common things that people do, maybe even on their personal property or on other things. And so when I, when I look at public, public works things, there's a lot of little things from power washing to, there's just a lot of demos, you know, a lot of things that public works can get involved in that we don't need union labor for that. We don't, we, it just doesn't make sense to me. If it doesn't require some type of expertise and isn't complex, like the shields thing we're building, or like the firehouses we're building, we shouldn't be, be taking the threshold so low. And I'll just leave it at that and we'll just have to make a decision next, next Tuesday. Thank you.
Alderwoman Nutriano.
Thank you, Chair. I remember what I was going to say. So we do have in here the 25% for minority participation. Are you at all concerned that that would be inflexible? I'm, I'm sort of worried about like, if we have a population change or something, we need to revise that upward. Like, you know what I mean?
Right. So we can, we can always, we can always amend this to change that 25%. That 25% is a default threshold. So if, if your hiring is at 25%, then you have met, conclusively met the public policy objective that needs to be furthered, which is improved employment opportunities for minorities, females, and the economically disadvantaged in the construction industry.
Yeah. Thank you. Great. Yeah, I would just, I would want us to consider, yeah, like if that number might need to change or, I don't know, just something food for thought for everyone. Thank you, Chair.
All right. And Alderman Redpath.
So we've got to look at this a couple of different ways. Project labor agreements are put together to fulfill the, the needs and the wants of the taxpayers of the city of Springfield. What the, what we did when we thought this thing through was, we needed to increase the diversity of our workforce in the city of Springfield. But guess what? We need the minority population to go apply for these apprenticeships that they have in every, I know every union, every one of them is dying to have minority participation. They need them. And, and I encourage everyone to, women and minorities of all kinds to go in and apply for these apprenticeships. They need people. This is an opportunity for us to make a diverse workforce in the city of Springfield. Thank you.
All right. Nice discussion on that. Any further discussion? We got it for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2023-334, an ordinance authorizing agreement in the amount of $135,000 with House Seal Levine Associates LLC to provide technical and professional assistance services in connection with the downtown Springfield and Mid-Illinois Medical District master plan in association with grant number 21-425018 from the Department of Commerce and Economic Development and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $135,000 for the planning and economic development.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2023-335, an ordinance authorizing execution of an employee leasing agreement with GovTemp USA LLC to retain Dallas Whitford to provide financial assistance services for the office of Budget and Management and Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed $30,000 from July 17, 2023 through February 29, 2024.
Move for consent.
Second.
We got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2023-336, an ordinance authorizing acceptance in a proposal under RFPCS 19-29, an execution of agreement for the sale of city-owned property consisting of one parcel located at 2027 East Capitol Avenue in an amount of $502 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for consent. Got a, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2023-337, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding between the city's, from Springfield firefighters, IAFF Local 37, and the city of Springfield regarding the assignment of new and different duties and responsibilities to bargaining unit employees in connection with providing supplemental advanced life support, ALS, and intermediate life support, ILS, care on private ambulances.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
I don't have a problem with this going to consent, but I would ask for it to go to the debate so we can at least have a fiscal analysis on how this will impact us. You know, I, I, I think, you know, especially for our new, all the men and all the women, they need to carefully make sure they look at this. I'm not, not against this. I know the objective. I understand. I thank you for the call, Mayor. But, but for many, many reasons, we need to understand how this affects us financially. I know, I know, you know, we will chunk this thing down, the, from our corporate fund, slowly but surely, without ARPA and stuff. I just think it's fair for us to have a financial impact on this.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely get you a financial impact study between now and next week.
I do plan on.
Can you give us just a brief summary of what this does? So it might answer some questions.
Yeah, so the unfair labor practice was filed because we were supplementing care on private ambulance companies. We're still doing that to this day. And basically, we're paying for those additional services that our members are providing.
So let me ask you a follow-up question. Are we in this, and I've read it, and, and, are we recouping our costs from the, from the ambulance company? I know at one point in time, we had a working group with Memorial and everybody and was trying to work out how this thing was going to work. Because I feel like our, our taxpayer shouldn't have to pay for our firefighters doing someone else's job. I respect everybody, respect what our ambulance company has to do. But our, our women and women are the first ones there all the time doing their thing. And they don't have to do this all the time. But when they do, they do it, you know, no hush, no fuss, and they need to be paid for it. And we need to be paid for that, too.
Yeah, I like to think we have the best medical providers out there. No, no shame on the private, but, you know, we do train on it every day and we do a great job.
Absolutely.
We do have, like you said, working groups. We have been working with the ambulance companies as well to make sure that we're striving to reach a, a common end to this, you know, but maybe that is the new norm as well. So, so we're looking into several things. It's being looked at by, by both us as the staff, the group as a whole, as well as the union. So.
I appreciate you saying that. Thank you.
But yeah, we'll get you a financial impact statement before next week.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Williams.
Yes, Chief. So, I mean, you guys kind of answered my question. So with, I mean, I thought that's what firemen did, you know, was, what we're talking about. So you grow up, you think, oh, the firemen put out fires. And then over the years, of course, as life changes, they are EMTs, I guess. So they save lives that way, too. And that's why it is. So is there a shortage of ambulance companies in Springfield or something that causes us to be doing this in the first place?
It's, it's a much larger topic than that. What it was is a, a shortage of ambulances brought on by the fact that there was a shortage of paramedics. So they could get us an ambulance, but they didn't have the provider on that ambulance. So instead of us going to the house and then our care ended at the house, our guys then would basically be the provider and get in the ambulance, the private ambulance, and see that patient all the way through to definitive care.
So, and so that's where the difference is.
The difference is, right, right. Instead of providing it just to the home and assisting the private company, and we were then assisting, or well, we were doing the care as part of the transport, which is what, what they bill for.
The union saw it as like a, an extra duty or, or something that's outside of the responsibility?
Is that part of, can I discuss that? Or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was a part of the grievance that was in the unfair labor practice that was filed, was they were doing additional duties on the ambulance and not being compensated for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I know it's unfair labor practice and didn't want to get into the weeds too much, but yeah.
Well, yeah. Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, so my question is, Chief, in corporation counsel, my, my understanding is there's a pay differential for these, for these firemen? How did we come up with that, that figure? If, if we haven't, haven't done it before?
It was part of negotiations to settle on unfair labor practice.
Okay. So doesn't that, doesn't it come before? It just goes to the union and did the?
It's kind of like a, I would liken it to contract negotiations. We settled that and then we bring it to you to be the final approval.
Okay.
It hasn't been paid out or anything. It's to you to decide if that's a fair settlement. Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief, for coming up and speaking. Just real quickly, I want to clarify, we are talking about a 1%.
Correct.
That's the number that's in this MOU that's proposed. So we're not talking about firefighters making a lot of extra bank on this. This is just an acknowledgement of the work that they're doing.
Correct.
And then just, just clarify for me, when we have our, and I'm going to call them very highly trained fire department because we see how often they train and the, the level of care that they're able to deliver because of that, that training that they If we have a firefighter who is on scene at a medical situation and providing care and they are the highest level of EMT on that site, like the ambulance pulls up and they, obviously, there's a driver, there's someone with that ambulance, but our firefighters have more training than them, what sort of complications or implications are there if the fire department were to not send an EMT with us?
So as an EMT, the highest level of care is responsible for that patient. If that, there's other factors, but if the patient requires advanced level of care, we cannot abandon, they call it abandonment of patient care. So we cannot abandon that patient. So we are then responsible to take that patient all the way through to the hospital.
So it's not really a choice of ours unless the fire department were to stop responding to any medical calls and completely drop our level of service to Springfield?
Yeah, I believe that is correct.
That was a twisty way of me saying. I mean, it is, but, but really what we're talking about is, you know, and this, this is a big concern to me. My, my ward contains a number of senior citizen, you know, living communities where it's, it's concentrated seniors who I think really rely and, and expect this high level of emergency care in all levels. And what you're saying is that should an ambulance come, and again, with a shortage of paramedics, with a shortage of trained, trained, people who are trained as well as our fire department is, our firefighters would then be abandoning care if they were to not go with those patients into the hospital.
Correct. On, yes, that's correct.
So we really, I mean, they've been doing what they
They are trained to do.
Trained to do and really obligated to do. This is just the ability for us to, and we do, this, this, this MOU does talk about forming a joint labor transport committee. I'm assuming we're going to be continuing conversations with ambulance services.
Correct.
Yeah. So I thank you very much for bringing this. I appreciate there's been a lot that's gone into the development at this point. And we'll point out that as much as things can go up 1% does not seem like a hefty, a hefty lift. So thank you very much.
Again, we will get to the financial impact.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to say. So the 1% will be reflected in information that you share with us.
Correct.
And as far as being the top, meaning the best of the best on-site, I understand that, understand the obligation. So this committee or work group, whatever, is in this, that's going to fix this in your your contract, you know, in the future maybe so that this situation goes away?
So there's many, many avenues of this. So the, the initial problem was brought on because private ambulances were not able to provide the, the level of care necessary on all their ambulances. But they could provide BLS ambulances, so basic. But, so that has improved over time, but it still is occurring. And so that is a conversation we're having within the, with the private ambulances, with our medical provider. Our, our resource hospital is Memorial, so they're involved in the conversation. And just, it's an overall group. But then the second part, the Joint Labor Management Committee, that's between the city, the staff of the fire department, and the union. And so there's multiple different pieces that are working to this. So it's not just one thing or another. It's, just know it's a, it's a big puzzle that has to be put together. And it's probably going to take some time to get to, get to a, a settlement for all sides. But this is a fix for the union unfair labor practice.
That's all I have, sir.
All right. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Chief, that was my next question on the timeframe. So you're having a working group. How often will this working group be meeting? Who all will be involved in that working group to talk about these strategies that you have to bring forward? And what's your timeframe you're looking at?
So I, we don't have a fixed end date in, in, in sight, but, you know, I know you're part of one of the private ambulance companies' board. And, you know, we've met with them individually as well as overall groups. That continues, it's every couple of months. But with the, the union thing, it's probably more frequently. But I don't have an end date for you.
Yes, so I am going to be present on voting on this, but I do want to say, just to be transparent, that we have an ordinance, Section 110.603, where we're operational requirements and the city code outlines the minimum number of ALS ambulances. Will the city be enforcing those permits? Because I want to make sure that we're not putting all the ambulances in one box when we have maybe one particular one that's not meeting the requirements.
Yeah.
So that's what brings forward the expectation that you're having, too, as well.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, I under, I'm all of the ordinance and we can discuss that more. I have been studying the, how that ordinance has affected the three ambulance companies individually.
Okay.
And so you and I both know what we're talking about and I've reached out to that other entity today. So, but yeah. How we will enforce that, I, I don't know at this point. That'll be between me and corporate counsel.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you have a motion for debate, which would overrule the consent, but you don't have a second for that.
Second. All right. So we've got a motion for debate and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Noted. 2023-338, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract, RFP-FD 24-13 with Lion Group Incorporated, for purchase of protective firefighting gear for an amount not to exceed $89,455.50 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2023-339, an ordinance authorizing payment to Antoine Fairley, a city Springfield police officer, for settlement of workers' compensation claim, 22-WC-007755.
Move to consent.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2023, 340, an ordinance authorizing addendum one to the contractual services agreement with Always Unconsulting LLC to increase the hours of service to 548 and expenditure of city funds for an amount not to exceed $49,320 for the Office of Human Resources.
Who for consent?
Second.
Got a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
2023, 341, an ordinance authorizing reduction of fines and costs owed to the city of Springfield in the amount of $38,505 for total payment to the city in the amount of $7,530, I'm sorry, $7,530 to settle Sangamon County Circuit Court Case 19-MR-723, 21-MR-1195, City of Springfield versus Julian Randall and Weed Leans for 2321 South 14th Street.
Watch for debate.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for debate. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Mister, Mister Chair, um, I, there is a young lady here to speak on this particular ordinance and I would, uh, if you may.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carla Snodgrass.
Hello. Could you state your- Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I'm a Realtor for the, um, with a real estate group and I have been working with Mr. Randall as well as the purchasing party that's wanting to purchase this home. We've been working on this for a month and a half. This woman really wants this home, but until we get this resolved where he can afford this, um, we're not going to be able to get that home sold. And, uh, from when we started with him, he bought a distressed property that was absolutely, I mean, he had no idea how bad it was until he walked in and he, you know, he's a man of simple means, he's a local, you know, he was not a company or any type of person that's going to be making a huge profit off of flipping homes. This is his first one. He made mistakes. He admits this and, you know, he didn't get things done as quickly as possible. He was overwhelmed by the project. Again, he didn't do things as well as he should have, but I'm looking at this as a Realtor standpoint. You know, right now, we're collecting $337 a year in taxes on that property because it only has $11,000 value. Now, let's see, he has now finished the project and I have photos of what he has done to this home. He has spent over $78,000 on this home to fix and repair it because it needed everything. It needed electrical, plumbing, new walls inside, all new windows, the exterior, I mean, he had to completely take down the jungle. I mean, he had no idea how bad this project really, really was and his current balance, I think is like $43,000 that he owes the city on a home that's not going to be worth, on average, about $76,000. Now, once this home is sold to my person that's going to buy it, it's now going to have a value of $80,000. Do you realize what that's going to do for just that block and just that area of South 14th Street? The property values are going to increase as well as the taxes, so we're going to have taxes that you're going to be able to collect that are going to be around 12 to 1300 versus $337. This man took this property on when nobody else did and the purpose, and the, the whole purpose was to get it to where it needs to be. He's done that and he's done beautiful work. So, I'm asking that the city council consider reducing that fine as much as you can because he was promised that, that if he finished the work under the last administration, that he would pay us a way significant less fee. Now, I mean, I realize you guys need to settle this on a case by case basis. I mean, he's not somebody out of Chicago. He's not a big investor. He's just a simple man, just trying to do the right thing for his community. I appreciate your time and here's the photos that can be passed around. So, you guys can see this property.
Hand them over to Alderman Redpath.
Okay.
Alderman Redpath.
So, who, so who promised him this was going to be forgiven?
Um, it was one of the inspectors.
What's his name?
Um, I do not have that information.
I won't know what his name is.
Okay. He's no longer with.
Well, he should not be longer with.
Yes.
We don't make those kind of promises to people.
Exactly.
Giving people false expectations is a wrong thing to do.
Exactly.
And, and I understand the plight that this young man's in and would love to help him, but this is a bad precedent for the city of Springfield.
Yes.
And, uh, if there's going to be any profit off this thing, it has to, if we would forgive any debt, which I'm, I'm not going to vote for, it should come back to what he owes us.
Yeah, and I agree, but, you know, the, what is the fine amount for per day? It's like $400?
Well, it was, uh, $300 per violation per day, but we stopped, uh, we stopped that accrual, uh, pretty quickly after we, um, after we filed. I mean, that, that started in 2019 and stopped when we got a judgment.
Okay, we also have COVID in there that's really wrecked havoc, so, you know.
That, that judgment was taken, um, August 21st of 2019.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else Alderman? Alderman Donlin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I just, as a reminder, you know, we talked extensively about this last week. I'm not going to reiterate some of the comments that I made last week, but very reluctant to forgive debt. Uh, this is, I'm glad you pointed out that this particular individual is not one of these out of town investment firms that buys property and just lets them, uh, run downhill and turn into, uh, words that I won't use in this chamber.
Exactly.
But, uh, I, I would like to point out one thing, regardless of, if we forgive this and this ordinance passes or not, that home is still worth $80,000 according to your number because the improvements have already been done. So, whether or not it generates, uh, tax dollars based on this ordinance is, is, is not an accurate, uh, correlation. What I'm saying is, uh, that, that property is already worth, the improvements have already been made. It's really that simple.
Yes.
It's whether or not we are, uh, uh, the council, it is in the council's interest and the city's best interest to forgive debt. The, the, the problem I have with this ordinance and I stated it last week as well is this didn't happen overnight. I mean, this went on, in order to get to the point where the numbers are as high as they are, it takes months and months and months.
And he was trying to jump through the hoops.
Yeah, but my, my tolerance for that is not high because we have countless examples in, in Ward 9 and I'm sure other areas of the city that we all know about and, uh, what we want is, we want property improved, we want, uh, in this case, it's a residential unit where people can live and be, and live in a vibrant, uh, neighborhood and I'm encouraged that these improvements have been made, but very frustrated the fact that it is as high as it is and we did put a hold on it, I must, I might add. So, anyway, it's going to be interesting to next week to see how it goes.
Well, and here's the issue furthermore that we can't sell the property because he has to set, settle this and he just doesn't have that kind of money. And I mean, I understand where you guys are coming from, but he's not a corporation. He's a little guy.
Looks nice. Thank you.
Right. I appreciate your time.
Alderman Gregory.
So, thank you. No, I, I, I don't have nothing, just, but to my, to my council members, you know, a, and, and I know this is the, the, the first, um, you know, time since the new administration that we had these type of situations, but we're going to have these type of situations that we have to make, um, some decisions on, so, um, you know, I know Mayor Busher last week, he has an ordinance coming from, um, Corporation Council. I'm, I'm asking for some things so we can streamline this type of thing and where, where we are, um, holding, um, people in these situations to our cost, to, to the things that our staff go out and, and, and do and, and in this situation, while he was promised whatever by inspector or, or so to speak is significantly less, you know, I, I am in agreement with Corporation Council on our cost, which is the 7500, um, to cover the things that we did. The, the things that, um, the per diem is, is our policy, we're not sending people out to, to, um, you know, ex, e, expend anything or, or, or pay any salaries. Um, and, 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 you know, I would support anybody's project who had that type of thing. I think that needs to be the baseline as, as long as we're covering what we have spent taxpayer money wise on these houses once they're fixed up and ready to move on, especially for a community like War II. We, we, I, I can't waste a day on, on getting properties fixed or either tore down or something because we, we, we are slowly but surely falling apart over there. We're trying to fix it. We're on the hustle trying to fix it. We've done some good things, but it's in bad shape and we need these houses. I mean, I, I, I toured like four blocks in my ward. I have 38 vacant houses, you know? 38 vacant houses from Lenox to South Grant and I skipped some. I ain't talking about Little Grass, I'm talking about nobody lives here, boarded up, causing me fits. I got a list that says houses that I don't want to look at the next four years that I'm working with Dave on, you know, because they're so hard to fix and we got one, guy's done People from our community don't like going to court. If I wasn't up here and I was in this situation, I wouldn't go to that court date either because I, my mindset would be like, I wouldn't, I'm not going to get treated fairly. I get those calls every day. There's a house painted right now in, in our community on the side. I've been discriminated against and they took my house. This is, this, so, so, so just as, just as, as, as well as somebody, well, he missed court and, you know, he's supposed to be better than that. I get that. Some people can walk that fine line and come in here and talk and some people can't. Some people are afraid to do that, so they don't, but that's no reason for us to punish this whole community and not forgive this simple debt. And thank you, I, I hope you support this next week. I really want to put it on consent this week because time is of the essence, but, but I, I, I respect everyone needing some time to really think about this and I hope that we think about this really, really hard and, and, and not a, oh, you know, we're, we're sending the presidents because we're not. What we're doing is doing the right thing and what we should be doing for our community. Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you Chair. I'm just curious, I know that this just popped up from out of nowhere, so do we have any other projects like this that's out there and just what is the boundaries of an inspector? Cause that's alarming to hear that an inspector promised to waive those fees. This is a question for Corporation Counsel.
Yeah, well inspectors can't waive fees.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Right, yeah.
What is their power?
That, that should not be, uh, stated. Cor, Corporation Counsel's office can settle cases for up to $15,000. Um, so that is, that's the threshold that we have right now. Uh, anything beyond that should, uh, would need approval and with the ordinance that's coming down, uh, those type of settlements would, will need to come through counsel, uh, for, for approval. So, that's going to be the change. Um, but there's no authority to settle it before it gets to my office and my office gets up to $15,000.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion for debate and a second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Unfinished business. The unfinished business. Uh, new business. I've got a couple of things. First, I'd like to remind everybody that, uh, due to National Night Out on Tuesday, our meeting has been moved to Wednesday at 5:30 right here, so, um, and, uh, the YMCA downtown along with the ABC Club and Bob Writings, uh, group is going to have two truckloads of sweet corn at 10:00 AM Saturday, uh, 7:29. Uh, if you've ever had Bob, Bob's, uh, sweet corn's pretty, pretty dang good, so, uh, they'll, they'll get you taken care of, so. Any new business? No new business. All right, let's go to citizens' request to address the committee. Uh, before we get started, I'd like to remind everybody, uh, we will not tolerate personal attacks and all comments are made to the chair, which is me tonight, so, uh, please honor that. You'll have five minutes. Uh, Mr. Clerk, let's go in the order that they signed up.
Alice Ramey.
Want a coat or a blanket or something?
I want a fur coat.
All right.
Well, I'll have to bring a slab of bacon up here and hang, you know? I'm sorry, I, you know, I got, anyway, I gotta, I want to say something that I think people will understand. You know, I've been in cities, big cities and small cities where firemen are coming and not only that, an ambulance is right behind them. I've been asking every administrator that sits up there, every mayor, for the last 15 years to have the ambulance private to the air, to the firemen. They should have their own because I'll tell you what, it takes three minutes, two minutes for you to get there with a guy I just saw a couple of hours ago driving with a stroke or even with a head, uh, injury. And if you have to wait five minutes on an ambulance to get there after the fire people got there and their paramedics, highly, highly recommended them, okay? When they came for me in September 8th, when I fell and I couldn't move flat, I would wanted them to go all the way with me to the hospital or I would not have to drop a lawsuit that I had on a neighbor, okay? They knew how I fell, they knew everything. That's what you need. You need that desperately and you need them highly. You wouldn't have the problems that you had with the ambulance killing that young man. That is wrong. I think they should be in penitentiary for life, but that's my opinion, but I think we need that more than anything else in the world. And also I got something else. When you going to pick up trees in our cit, on Ward 3? Because I don't want them on my lot.
Mr. Brooks.
I'm sorry?
She was asking when you're, when the-
Are we going to have to put an airpiece in your airplane? You can understand.
I was, I was, I'm in a colleague with my colleague.
Yeah, right, uh-huh. When you going to have coffee? Come on. I want to know.
She's asking. Director, she's asking when the, when the, uh, tree limbs are gonna, are going to be picked up in what, Ward 3?
Ward 3 and they're on my lot.
I'm sure they're working extremely hard trying to catch up with-
Uh, it's a subject that comes up on, on a very regular basis and, uh, I'm certainly glad to address it this evening. Uh, since the 29th of June, uh, Public Works crews have been involved in picking up, uh, branches that came down during the storm that are, uh, near the curb on the easement. Uh, we are working eight, I, we're back to eight hour, uh, shifts. We're not working the 12 hour shifts, uh, as of Monday of this week. We still have, uh, the initial pickup to finish. We're almost done, uh, but we have pulled some of those crews off and started putting them, uh, working in the alleys because there's a lot of debris that are in the alleys, uh, that were left after, uh, the crews, uh, repaired the, uh, the power lines. So, uh, if, if our crews have gone through your neighborhood and made that initial pickup, uh, we'll be back to pick them up, but after we've finished the first round and worked a lot in those alleys. We are going to continue, uh, the regu, the, the normal schedule for the branch pickup in August, which will begin on Monday, the 7th. So, uh, we're picking them up. There's a lot of branches. Um, we've almost finished the initial, the initial sweep, uh, and then we'll get back to those, uh, those difficult areas after that, but we've also got a lot of work to do in the, uh, in, in the, in the alleys.
This is the 25th, the 1st of August comes very fast and I'm having first nights at my lot, so would you mind picking them up please?
I'll talk to you after this is over, all right?
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else?
Yes.
Watch your time.
I'm freezing right now, I know, but young man. Okay.
Talk fast, it'll warm you up.
I want to thank all of you for listening, really I do. You guys are doing a good job. You answer, you asked a lot of questions that should have been answered a long time ago, Ward's, uh, 6, and also some of them are very detailed because that's because you're a background, which is very good. I'm glad it's sitting up there. I'm glad that all of you are, but we all got to work together in this city to build it and get it done right and have houses that are willing to be rented or sold to people that really need it, no matter what the work is, okay? No matter how they got it done or why they got it done because they want to have it. My house is still being worked on. I'm proud of my house. I've lived there for 70, 68 years and I do not like popular place. I don't. I think they needed to tear it down and build houses that would normally should have been there. The duplexes look like, uh, Monopoly houses, as I've said many, many times. I'm waiting for them to change the streets to Parkway in Indiana, okay? Thank you Ralph and have a beautiful night.
All right, thank you. Hope you get warm. Rosanna Bolito.
Um, I came here today because I felt like there was a big gap in the conversation that I heard last week, um, and so I just want to fill in the gap. First, I want to give you, I did my own research, um, 2008 study on sexual harassment and assault. Uh, in 2018, the Sexual Harassment and Assault Organization commissioned a 2,000-person nationally representative survey on sexual harassment and assault. It was conducted nationwide. It found 81% of women and 43% of men experienced some form of sexual harassment- experienced some form of sexual harassment or an assault in their time. Sexual harassment in the U.S. is staggering, and the young age it begins at is alarming. Dr. Anita Rajah, professor and director of the University of California in San Diego, Center for Gender Equality and Health, which provided pro bono data, data analysis for the landmark study. And another executive director in that organization said, "The U.S. will never, uh, be the land of the free as long as millions of people experience sexual violation that has caused them pain." It says ninety-seven percent of young women have been sexually harassed, the study says. "Harassment covers a wide range of behaviors of offensive nature. It is commonly understood as a behavior that demeans, humiliates, and intimidates a person, and is characteristically identified by its unli- likeliness in terms of social and moral reasonableness. In the legal sense, these behaviors that appear to be disturbing, upsetting, or threatening, and have an effect to nullify a person's rights or impairing a person from benefiting for their right, for their rights." So, I'm reading that because the data talks about young women who are, uh, have, uh, experienced sexual harassment. And, uh, when I heard last week the talk about the Freedom Caucus, um, I have to stand up for Abigail, and this is why. At sixteen years old on the streets of Chicago, a man walked out masturbating and chased me and my girlfriends down the street. It happens, what happens to a girl when that happens? You think you had something to do with it, you're ashamed to say anything, you're ashamed to go to your parents? I thank God that Abigail had the courage to say, "I'm not feeling good about having a biological male in, uh, my dressing room." And as a sixteen, you know, she's sixteen, as a sixty-seven-year-old woman, I do not want, um, biological male in my dressing room either. So, to end, I just wanna say, I choose to protect every young sixteen-year-old woman and girl from sexual harassment. I have compassion for young women who are frightened and hesitant to live their lives to their fullest potential, and are aware of having a biological male in their dressing room is not normal or natural. I would be fearful too, Abigail. I today wanna start a Me Too movement, Me Too Abigail movement, because I experienced firsthand sexual harassment at the age of sixteen. And I just wanna say that the rally that happened by the Y, this is the difference I see. Uh, these men were on their own time, they are state representatives, they always drive a hundred miles, all the time, that's their job, they have to drive to the Capitol. And, um, they did it on their own time, they didn't do it on the Springfield taxpayers' dime, they used their own gas. And I think the story here is different, and I just wanna apologize to the taxpayers of Springfield that I have to waste your tax dollars when we should be taking care of city business right now, but this had to be addressed, thank you.
Ma'am, we, we do, we do not allow signs in, in here, so, uh, please, you know, keep your sign down, thank you.
Edward Tandy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, my name is Edward Tandy. And, uh, my remarks this evening pertain to events, uh, that, uh, took place, uh, July thirteenth at the Rotary Park, they were sponsored by the Freedom Caucus. And, uh, also, um, remarks that were made at the last week's, uh, council meeting, uh, possibly just to deter, uh, to, um, divert attention away from the real issue at hand, at hand, which is allowing biological males in the bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers of the biological females, and, uh, choose instead to attack all the citizens involved. Uh, first, I'd like to share a few experiences as a child and as an adult. When I was about two years old, I climbed up on a sofa to reach a shelf, uh, which had a metal figurine of a pony. The figurine was rather heavy and it fell on my little finger, I have the damaged finger as a reminder to this very day. When I was about eight years old, I was building a model airplane with balsa wood. In the process of using my coping saw, I slipped and cut my thumb. Uh, the cut obviously healed long ago, but the scar remains. When I was in my early thirties, I was in the investment business. On one business call, the owner had to leave briefly, and so he opened a glossy magazine, tossed it in my lap and said, "Look at this while I'm gone." In just one second, that repulsive enemy, image, uh, has forever been etched in my memory. There are many events in our lives that leave lasting impressions and even scars, and that's the point, uh, to be made this evening. Uh, at the, uh, July eighteenth council meeting, some of the comments that were made, uh, had to do with the many, many, uh, benefits offered by the Y, but not, uh, any upon the concerns of young ladies and their parents, grandparents, citizens, and public officials gathered at Rotary Park. All these people came together to voice opposition, opposition to one thing, that absurd emotionally, um, uh, scarring policy of the Y. No one, and I repeat, no one at the Illinois Freedom Caucus was criticizing anything about the Y, except that one policy. So, uh, in order to, to ignore that central point of the caucus's gathering, uh, it's a rather short-sighted and long-damaged policy is nothing short of sanctioning of child abuse by the Y. The Y was once an organization that could be trusted with our children and our grandchildren, but apparently not anymore. I'm sure that, uh, some of the comments that made, were made at last week's meeting, uh, might have been, uh, thought of differently. Uh, but instead, uh, some of the comments that were made, uh, where I drove a hundred miles, or some of the people drove a hundred miles out of their way in order to gain, uh, state and national coverage, uh, to advance our political ambitions. My granddaughter, Grace, has attended Y activities in the past, I'd drive a thousand miles out of my way to protect her. Uh, various other inflammatory phrases were made such as outside agitators, manufactured rage, seeking the attention they crave, singling out people in our community, and say that we are lacking peace, nothing more than an emotionally charged phrase intended to detract from the true purpose of the gathering. While it is unfortunate that a few attendees at the Y are confused about their sexuality, but arrangements can be made for that, the other ninety-nine percent of the attendees are not. What's also unfortunate is that today's culture, including the Y, is catering to and enabling the highly vocal tiny minority at the expense of the vast majority. Who's protecting our young, tender, and vulnerable children? Here's my question, are we going to protect these young, sensitive, and impressionable girls from being scarred for life? How are you going to answer outraged parents and grandparents who have trusted their daughters and granddaughters to the Y, and you have fully supported the Y's policies? Even more pointedly, what would you say to a daughter who wanted to know why you subjected her to such an egregious violation of her privacy that forever scarred her emotionally and why you didn't protect her? You can deny all that I've said this evening, but facts are stubborn things. Complacency is complicity. If all the concerned families at Rotary Park were complacent, all two hundred or two hundred and fifty of them would not have bothered together on a hot afternoon. I imagine I'll be accused, be accused of some hate speech when all I'm doing is exercising my freedom of speech rights to speak up for and protect our most vulnerable and valuable resource. I hope that the right thing, um, the right thing that will be done in changing a mind, and, uh, perhaps the peace that was referenced that I'm, that we were all lacking, that the peace that claim we are lacking will be found, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tandy.
Robert Pinkston.
There's a couple points, I'm going back to the, first thing I wanna say is that I know that as Alderman, your main, your, your main job is not here at the dais, but in your wards. And we know we had the storm of the century hit us a couple weeks ago, people were pointing fingers. I wanna say a big thank you for the job you guys have done, as well C W O P, eating Springfield back together the way it used to be. Those who don't realize how bad it was, these big Smokey Bones and Dirks and that thing wiped out the entire power grid of Springfield, you guys, I know you worked hard in your wards, C W O P had complaints. That I just wanna say is, thank you very much for the job you did, eating Springfield put back together after that storm, that was quite impressive. And the same thing I wanna say is, like you're pointing out, like, I was at that rally at Rotary Park, and sometimes you're the city leaders, you have to watch sometimes what you say. We've been very lucky that all the protests in Springfield, no matter what side it's on, have been peaceful. We've had counter protests there, they all get along well. The rally basically was not to be anti-gay, anti-trans, anti-anything, it was basically people's concern, and this is a nationwide issue, and it's a huge issue, not just a few outrages, over biological men being in women's locker rooms, showers, being allowed to identify as women, playing as women in women's sports, taking away scholarships, opportunities. And that rally was kind of a concern that they had. Now, the Y W C should have been smart and locked, roped off the locker room, except for the team members only, to be in that room while the girls were changing and unchanging. That's some issues across the country, we've seen the controversy, it's a rabbit trail we can go down. It's called the trans extreme activists, or even attacking gay people with some of these agendas. But women do have a right to have a safe place, and this is more about women's rights that they were fighting for these days. People called Marla King Junior an outside agitator, that's kinda unfair thing you say. When you're an Alderman and you take one side and you dismiss them in that way, it might hurt how they look upon you as city leaders. You can disagree with something, but be respectful in how you talk about it. If we disagree with each other, it should be over the issue, but not making it personal. Some of the comments, some are brand new, they're just learning, but kinda be careful of the words you choose, 'cause that really hurt a lot of people when you said it the way you said it. As Alderman, that is an issue, that it's nationwide, it's a huge issue. Ax but a lot, how they got on the wrong end of that and cost them a bunch of money. It's a highly divided issue in this country, and that's something when you talk about either side, people are, this whole issue is basically to me was protecting women's rights to have a safe place in the locker room, last thing you want is grown men walking around naked. In this case, it did not happen, which by your testimony, but other places it has. We don't have to make wrong with children or other women, that's just common sense, I just courtesy. People have rights, but one right ends where another one does begin. And I think a woman's locker room should be for the biological women, biological men should be over here, it's nothing to be hateful about. It's just common sense and courtesy for each other, and that's what I'm saying. No one's saying that the trans people were there are nice people, they don't have a right to exist. No one's saying that, it's just we believe that certain places should remain safe for the women, and that's basically what the protest was about, it was peaceful. I saw no hatred toward anyone whatsoever at the protest. People were not busting, they were very concerned about it, and that's what they were talking about. And so my concern was, I was kinda hurt when I read those comments, but just let, let's learn this, be careful in how you say certain things. I said, I don't agree with this protest, but, you know, that's just how they feel, this is how I feel. But to say it's outside agitators and manufactured outrage is really downplaying what a lot of people feel about that issue that only hurts your reputations, I'm not saying you all got good reputations as leaders, you've done a great job so far, but kinda be careful in how you say certain hot-busting issues to the general public. I don't mean to rattle on, I'm just getting off, but that's kinda why I feel on it, but you guys have done a great job so far as a city council, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. All right, Andrew McLaughlin.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I spoke with Mr. McLaughlin, and we're, Public Works is helping address his issues, I don't believe he's here this evening.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, is there anybody else that signed up to speak?
That's all that have signed up, sir.
Okay, uh, we got a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I guess we didn't have executive session, right?
Uh, no executive session.
I almost blew by that.